Good evening. I will call to order the March 4th, 2021 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. And with that, if you will please stand, Mark Atkins is going to lead us in prayer and tense late in the pledge.
Father, thank you for a beautiful day today here. And thank goodness all the snow and the ice have left us and we're welcoming warmer weather, Father. We all look forward to that. Father, we ask that you give us discernment tonight, continue to guide us and to make proper decisions for the constituents of our town. Continue to watch over those who protect us, our police and fire departments and all of our employees that do an amazing job keeping our town operating. Go with us now as we do the business of the town, lead, guide and direct us in all we do. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mark and Tim. Citizens comments?
None at this time.
None at this time. Our next item is the approval of the minutes of February 4th, 2021 meeting. Counselor, are the minutes in order?
In order as to form, Chairman.
Commission, have you had a chance to review it? Are there any corrections or additions that are needed? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes carry. Old Business. Kevin, it looks like the only agenda item under Old Business has been withdrawn by the applicant?
That is correct.
Okay, so then I'm assuming we can go on to New Business?
That is correct.
All right. New Business, the first item is annexation of plan of service request, John Burns, Oak Metals, Northside of Lee Road, annexation and PRD zoning.
Yeah, this is a request for two parcels of land totaling 32.59 acres with frontage on Lee Road. They also border the Woodpoint, Woodmont and Creekstone Village subdivisions. The request is to annex it into the town. All services here would be provided by the town. I do want to apologize, the plan of services was inadvertently left out of your packet, so we didn't have that in your packet, but they do have that in front of you tonight. This is, again, all services will be provided by the town, including water, as this is, it does allow within our service area for water. The surrounding zoning, as I said, is a mix of all PRD in town. The zoning in the county is RM. Land use plan would support a medium density residential development in this area. The requested PRD is for a 95 lot, single-family development. It would be connect to the Woodpoint and Woodmont developments where they already have streets stubbed into them and will also include some, two accesses to Lee Road and then also two new stub streets to the east, to the adjoining vacant tracks. The proposed homes are all very, meet what we look at as far as setbacks as well as the brickstone hardy mix with regards to the exterior materials. We had a few comments. One, we asked them to submit a traffic study and they are in agreement with that and when that would be submitted with the Flumery Platte. We had a few other comments, number five regarding their future road extension to the north in Phase 5. They have addressed that with regards to extending that right-of-way to that, to that property line that would be built as a part of the development of that phase. We'd ask them to add some additional parking at the mail kiosk slash amenity area. They have added some additional spaces there, so we can remove that comment. Comment number seven is the original drawing we had submitted. It appeared as if the lots that would be backing up to Lee Road and we were, had real concerns with regards to how close those houses would be to Lee Road. However, with some additional information from them, they are showing the right-of-way dedication of Lee Road and then a 20-foot strip of open space and a landscape strip within that open space between those houses and Lee Road. So there would be a buffer between those houses and Lee Road. And so I'm, with that, I'm, that comment can be removed as well. I'm not concerned about that closeness any longer. So, so really, comment number four regarding the traffic study would be the only comment that we would have outstanding on this one. And again, that would come with the Platte if it is rezoned.
Kevin, is the extent, the extension onto the north, is that to Spriggen Way?
I think that's the name. It's Woodpoint is the name of the development. I believe that is correct on the right name, yes.
And with, with the buffer and whatnot, we still are maintaining the rear setback requirements?
Right. The setback would be outside, the lots and everything would be outside of that 20-foot buffer strip.
Okay.
That would be in addition to the lot and the, and the house setback from the back lot lot.
And that's ultimately how you arrived at feeling much better about it?
Correct.
And good to go forward.
Correct.
Then I also heard that this PRD request is very similar to the other PRDs that have been approved in this area.
Yes.
And probably in Smyrna for that matter.
Yeah, and comparable as far as lot sizes and again, those exterior materials that we look for. They do have the 35-foot front setbacks, the seven-and-a-half-foot side setbacks that we look for, all those things.
Okay. Anybody from the commission have any questions for Kevin or, or comments?
You know, one of the things I will make a comment is, we've been talking for a good long while and having meetings on this, trying to get our setbacks to work. And I'm glad to see initially here on a proposal with a PRD that is coming in for everything that we've met about and talked about. So I don't know who's delivering the message at all, but they're getting it. We appreciate that.
And that's a great point. As a matter of fact, something that I think that you've really emphasized and championed, I noticed that there's HOA third-party management here to keep up with the open spaces and the areas that generally an HOA takes care of. So it's good to see that. Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most curious. Our next item under New Business is rezoning requests. Sam Coleman, Southern Terminus of Spring Hill Drive, rezoning R1 to R3.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request on, it has, again, Spring Hill Drive as well as several other streets that are stubbed into it. It is a part of parcel six, map 33 parcel six. That's the largest portion of this. A portion of that parcel actually has already been zoned R3, and so that's why it's only a part of the parcel. And then there is another very small tract of land, kind of a remnant tract from when Hunter's Point was developed, that is also included in this request, totaling about 72 acres total, existing from R1, zoning of R1 to being proposed to be rezoned to R3. Surrounding zoning is a mix of all R1 and R3 zoning. All of the developed tracks are R3. The only one that's R1 that is developed is the, the school location that it does border a little bit. Land use plan would support medium density residential developments for this zoning would be, would be consistent with our land use plan. And that's what I have.
Kevin, we, we talked about this on several occasions, but when we originally were, were allowed to annex and whatnot, it was my understanding that a lot of the properties were brought in R1 that we annexed to allow for an agricultural use, if that was still wanted to be continued by others. Does this kind of fall in that category here?
Yeah, certainly this, this area was all annexed. We did a fairly large annexation of kind of all at one time where we, basically everything between Rock Springs Road and Ammerville Road that had not been annexed out through the interstate was annexed kind of all at one time because we were getting several requests and we just kind of went and kind of annexed it all at once. And so R1 is the lowest density zoning we have. It is, does allow agricultural use, and so that is kind of the fallback zoning. If you don't have a specific zone you assign to something when you annex, it kind of comes in automatically as R1. And so that, this is certainly, there's several tracks in this area and this is one of them that fall under that.
We've actually seen this before, have we not?
I don't think we've seen this one before. We've seen some others in that area.
There was something somewhere around here.
We've seen others in this area.
That may not have developed.
Right.
Yeah. And.
Was it up at the top of the hill there?
Was that?
Yeah. The property kind of to the east here of this one, there's a track that's not developed to this R3.
And as, as I recall at that time, there was maybe a petition that was circulated or certain, some discussions that were going on that said, you know, that they were maybe opposed to the R3, but it was because the information indicated there would be town homes built here.
Right.
So let's just get it out. Are town homes allowed in R3?
Town homes are not allowed in R3.
Or apartments.
Or apartments or anything like that. This is single-family, 10,000 square foot lots. I think under, in some communities that are nearby to us, R3 does allow for that. And so I think that was why that kind of got started back previously, but this is, would not allow for any type of town homes or apartments, only single-family.
So this will actually mirror what's being developed there as far as similar homes, similar lot sizes?
Certainly the lot sizes will be, would be the same minimum as all the adjoining developments, yes.
Okay. Other questions for Kevin?
Have we had any, any other things or comments?
We have had some calls on this one, which we would expect because we sent letters to, there are several houses that got letters from us. And so we, we, so we have explained to them the situation and that it's basically the same zoning as they have. So we have had some calls. There's another one later on in the agenda we've had some call on as well, this, but, but I mean, it's consistent with the, the other development in the, in the area, so that's how we, we look at it and what we would recommend to you.
Other questions or comments?
Well, it's a good chance everything that's sitting there R1 now, when it develops, will come in as R3s as well. So that, if you look at that map, anything that has a home on it's R3, so. I'm glad you clarified the issue about the, the questions from some of the people who may not quite understand the apartments and town homes. That is not what this is. We hear that after the fact a lot of times.
Yeah. Well, I just kind of want to get it out there that when we're looking at an R3, and particularly when you're looking around this neighborhood, this is consistent with what, as you said, is being developed as these are being brought in. Other questions or comments?
So would there be a, a traffic study required as it gets closer to development?
Potentially. I mean, it depends on the, when those Platte comes in, if they come in with a Platte that's, that would meet the requirements. Typically, you're looking, if they do 100 lots or so, it kicks into where our requirements would kick in. So certainly it could be down the road, yes, that there would be a traffic study. On a straight zoning like this, it would, wouldn't kick in until that Platte comes in.
I understand.
And certainly we'll be looking at cross-connections to existing.
Yeah, you've got several streets stubbed into this area. I think there's at least three, maybe more. So yeah, you certainly would be looking at.
Okay.
Extension.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is again a rezoning request. This comes from Sean Collins, Helmsley Place, 8964 Rocky Fork, Ammerville Road, rezoning R3 to PRD.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request of about 13.3 acres, R3 to PRD. Surrounding zoning is a mix of PRDs, the bank side and westover PRDs as well as RM and Rutherford County. Land use plan would support medium density residential in this area. The proposed PRD is for 33 single-family lots and 24 town homes. The, again, as, with the previous PRD we discussed, the setbacks on the single-family and all, they're 35 feet, the town homes have the, are 35 feet with the, the two, two parking pads in front of the garage. The side setbacks are, and all those things are being met. The, the town home portion of this is age-restricted, which is similar to a, a similar type of development we've had in this area. The single-family would not be, but the, the town home portion are, is age-restricted. The only comments that we have are that I can't speak yes or no that they've been addressed were the four, five and six, which were actually from Consolidated Utility District. And so those were, would have still have to be addressed. One concern we do have, and this is with several in this areas regarding the fire flow, and there are some upgrades underway to address that, but they would have to meet those fire flow requirements before they could get building permits, certainly. As this is a zoning at this time, that's something that can be addressed down the road, but that is something, did want to bring that up. I think that's all that I have.
Kevin, can you explain for everyone when we're talking about age-restricted, either you or Jeff, what we're looking at when we're considering that as part of a project?
Essentially, it's, they have to be compliance with, it's called the Housing for Older Persons Act, and so that's a state law that they are in compliance with. I believe it's 80% of the homeowners in that area have to be at least age 55. And there may be some other capacities to that law, but as far as we're concerned, that's the main portion of it that we would be concerned about.
Okay. With the towns themselves, and I know when, when we look at it, we'll, we'll want to include the two-car parking pads, the auxiliary parking, which they're showing in this drawing, and we'll want to make sure that we have enough in the way of auxiliary parking Any other thoughts or, you know, on, on the project itself?
Again, it's, it's from a, the architectural elevations and all that are again, consistent with what we are looking to see with regards to the brickstone and hardy mix. You know, it's, it's consistent with, with regards to the, all those kind of things. And so, I mean, I think we're HVAC units in the interior and all those kind of things. So I mean, I think we're, it's consistent with what we're looking for and wanting to see. And again, it's, the type of development it is is very similar to the Stewart's Glen development, which we saw a few months ago.
Yeah. Well, just personally, or it's probably not personally, it's probably from a council perspective, I know that we've challenged our development community to, to look at construction for our seniors and that, you know, for a long while, we saw a lot of our senior community leave when they could no longer take care of their home and they went to other communities and they looked for the town homes and the condos and the different types of developments that were more conducive to the, to their lifestyle. You know, it was interesting, I was talking to a friend of mine that I would like to say he was a lot older than me, but really he wasn't. But, you know, we were having.
What age was this?
No comment. We were having one of those afternoon discussions and I think I might have said, I'm just going to go to the villages, you know, when I retire, I'm just going to go to the villages. And he goes, why would you want to go there? He said, you're just around a bunch of people that you're just kind of waiting for them to die. I thought, where is that coming from? But his, his whole point was this, he said, you know, as a senior, you know, you look for those community opportunities where there's a mix, where you have, you know, some families and couples that are a little bit younger than you, and then you have a lot that are a lot younger than you. And he said, it just really makes for a community. And he said, it makes you feel like, you know, you haven't been sent to the old folks' home or something like that. So, you know, to me, again, we sent this challenge out and I'm glad to see that we're starting to see this product being brought to us. Other questions or comments?
Kevin, is there any concern about, or is there any number we need to look at as far as one way in and one way out of this development with that many homes in there and that many people in there?
Um, we, the, the, the bank side PRD to the north, there's an opportunity there to, to connect to that when that gets there. It's.
But if, if this develops before that does, their, their landlot, that's.
Sure.
I see where the roads are going out the back and out the, you know, out the top there.
Yeah. I think, I mean, we do have that concern about, I think, the stub, with the stub streets, I think that from a code requirement, they, they can meet that requirement. So I think we're okay there. Again, I think this one, you know, the bank side development, it may get there before bank side, I don't know, because that's, that's one of the last phases of that, that one, so it may be there.
Yeah, because eventually it's going to tie into Kedron Church.
Exactly.
And they were going to widen that from there back to Rocky Fork.
Exactly. And you, and you're going to have the roads within that portion of the PRD that's just north of this that you could tie into. The westover PRD, which is the one to the south, there is not, there's no streets stubbed into that one, so there really wasn't a way for them to stub into the south. So really, north and east was the only option they had. And so they're, they've done what they can do, you know, with, with regards to that.
Now, is the one to the north where it looks like there's a house there, is that part of bank side?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that PRD is the north and the east part of that PRD there. Those other three, two or three tracks there.
Other questions or comments?
Chairman, I will not be voting. These, these sellers are actually clients of mine, so I'm going to stay out of this conversation.
Okay. So Councilman Atkins, actually Vice Mayor Atkins will not be participating or voting in this. Sorry, Mark.
Call me Mark.
Okay. Other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
I'll send it.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any additional thoughts, questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our next item, Jay Fulmer, 517 Nissan Drive, rezoning R1 to PRD.
That one has been withdrawn.
Okay, so that's withdrawn.
This morning.
All right. Our next item then, Janet Ibrahim, 2090 Rocky Fork Road, rezoning R4 to PRD.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request for about a piece of property that's just under two acres, 1.98 acres. Currently is zoned R4, requested to be rezoned to a PRD. This property does also allow within the Eden Springs overlay. The surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3 and C2, and the land use plan would support a mix of office, retail and multifamily in this area. This proposed PRD is for five duplex-type units, so 10 total units, and with a, have an access off of Rocky Fork Road and then would then access the five duplexes would be accessed internally from that private roadway. We had a few comments. We'd asked them to show apparatus movement for a fire truck. We have received that. We, our fire department did look at that. They, they are concerned with it, with how it is. The, it's, it's, they would request some sort of hammerhead or turnaround. The apparatus, the, they had shown basically that it would come in, but then have to reverse. And so that's only allowed to be done if it's less than 150 feet. And so that's, this is more than that. So, so that's, that's, they have, did address the comment to provide that movement, but that is still a concern of ours. Comment number four regarding the setback details, that has been addressed. The comment number five, they had, originally their plan just showed that they would have a masonry, masonry material. What they have clarified now that it would be brick, brick or stone, I believe, but that, and it would be up to about 20% of the site or the building would have at least 20% of that. Their elevations still show all siding, but their text within the civil engineering documents show at least 20%. We asked them to provide the required and minimum square footages of open space and improved open space. They have shown the provided open space, which is, does exceed our requirements. However, the improved open space are showing about 1,800 square feet and based on our ordinance requirements, they need a little over, almost 3,900 square feet of improved open space. So that still needs to be up some and addressed. Number seven was really kind of an informational requirement, but regarding the stormwater requirements, but the back left corner, I'm sorry, back right corner, there is a pretty significant amount of fill in that area and our main concern was the stormwater from that fill material, making sure it comes into the site and doesn't go onto one of the adjoining tracks. That's something that can be looked at when the grading plan comes in, but we did want to bring that to their attention. And then comment number eight has been addressed regarding, they, they, part of their wording in, on that one page, so showed 12 units because the original plan had 12, they reduced it to 10, so that, comment number eight can be removed. So I think as staff, we're still have some real concerns with this one, primarily from that fire apparatus movement is our, probably our main concern with that. So, and I think that's, and the fire department, they are here tonight. If you have questions, they might could address that specifically better than I could if you need to. And certainly the developer and the representation is here as well. But that's what I have.
Do we have any questions for staff before we begin here? Kevin, have you, because of the density of this, is there really any way for them to provide what the fire department's looking for without taking out a unit?
Probably not. Again, this was, originally this was 12 units and so we, we, and that had, in addition to the fire apparatus concerns, we had concerns because a couple of the duplexes has really short driveways and we were concerned about parking within the street and even, you know, having, if the truck had to come in, there may be cars in the way. And so by removing that one set of two units did help the situation some, but, but even with, as it's laid out here, it will be, I think it would be pretty difficult for them to meet what the fire department would require with regards to that turnaround.
Would this be the R4 density as, as it sits?
I mean, our, I mean, as it sits right now, without anything, they could probably build three duplexes because they got enough road frontage to do that.
Right.
They got about 260 or 70 feet and they had, had to have at least 75 per duplex, so they have enough room to do three, just utilizing the existing Rocky Fork Road. R4 basically is a duplex on 10,000 square feet. So, I mean, they are, they're not, from a density standpoint, they're still within R4.
That was my question.
So, but it's just because of the configuration of the property and maybe. So, but it's just because of the configuration of the property and making a, a road that where a truck can make that turn makes it difficult.
It's a challenging piece to do that here. Um, it borders the KOA, so it's gonna be a challenging piece anyway, from a marketing perspective, unless you're renting it out. Uh, remind me, did we not have some R4s further down Rocky Fork that came in a year, year or so ago?
I don't know if we got R4. We got some townhomes that have been approved near the schools.
Yeah, I'm thinking this was just not far down from here. Oh, wow.
I can't recall. Uh, the only thing I can recall on Rocky Fork is the, the single-family development and the townhome development that have been approved near, uh, the new schools out there.
Well, we've been, we've been battling the driveway thing. We just talked about that in a, in a previous development, and, um, that's something I think we just have to make sure we have ample parking. This on-street parking thing just has gotten to be a problem, not only here, but in a lot of other communities that are starting, I think, starting to follow some of our guidelines as far setbacks go. The, um, the apparatus has to, has to be able to enter and circle or turn around or something in there. It has to be.
Right.
And that's just paramount. So, that's a safety thing.
Yes, sir. If you give me your name and address?
Sure. Jared Gray, Civil Design Consultants, 8170 Coley Davis Road, Nashville, Tennessee. We're the civil engineers of record. In regards to a turnaround, we have taken a look at, specifically, if we can fit a single-lane hammerhead turnaround on the end of the drive. We are at a roughly 180 feet as currently designed, and we can fit a single-lane hammerhead turnaround for emergency, uh, fire truck use, uh, using our Auto Turn software. Uh, so we would be willing to put that in. Essentially, we have roughly 20-foot of green space between the edge of the, uh, building and our property line there. We would shift, uh, basically, buildings one and two and 10 and nine would get a little bit closer to four, three, or eight, so.
Can I, can I, just, I got a quick question for Kevin?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Kevin, can you use your pointer and kinda show everybody what he's talking about? Because we're just talking about lots and streets here.
You said, you said, I think you said between 10 and 9, is that, or?
10 and, 10, 1 and 2 and 10 and 9 would essentially move roughly, uh, four foot over toward 3 and 4 and 8 and 7. Basically, you'd take those and just shift those over. Just, again, what we're trying to do is maximize the green.
In this area here, at the, at the end of the road.
That's right. That's where it would be, and it would be on both sides. So, essentially, the truck would come in, back out, and then pull out and around. Um, again, we are, we are past the 150-foot threshold by just ever so slightly. Um, and you can see also that the, uh, drive to your right, which is to the east side there, you can see how it extends to the property line. That's on purpose. That allows the truck, if in fact it does choose to back out, it can do that as well. That's the reason why that is there. Uh, regarding the comment relative to formal open spaces, that we definitely would agree to all of those comments. Um, and, uh, you know, ask that this be moved forward to, and handle these things, whenever we come back with site plan.
With the movement of, um, 1, 2, 9, 10, are we concerned that we're getting to any issues with side setbacks at that point?
Um, I mean, I guess it's potential. We'd have to look at that. I mean, there, if, he's showing some side setbacks, some dash lines there, and building two is currently right on the line.
No, those are the, we have, essentially, you have three individual lots, and we are showing, um, the sheet that you've got pulled up there is actually showing the screened-in version. All three of these lots would be combined. And so, you're, you're dealing with one, with one specific, uh, parcel of property. You would be dealing with one specific parcel. So, by shifting 1 and 2 and 10 and 9, you're actually helping yourself. You've got a side setback on the left, side setback on the far right, bottom and top.
Yeah.
What you're looking at there is a screen line that was provided by the survey that is essentially those, those three individual parcels at one time.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause it is, that, it's, it's never been divided into three parcels. It's, it may have been a plat drawn up or something.
Yeah, there was a plat drawn up. That is correct.
So, but, 'cause it's, it's all one tract of land. So...
That's right.
So, basically, what you're showing with those dash lines is that would be 20 feet currently, basically, roughly between, say, building two and building three and building eight and building nine.
Correct.
So, if you shifted four feet, there would be, there would be 16 roughly feet between there. So, you, um, we would typically try to get, again, at least 15 feet. So, they would still be okay with that, with regards to that.
Then what type of...
Be getting closer, but...
What type of lane width would that create, then, for a hammerhead?
Single lane, probably 11 or 12 feet is what I'm assuming.
It would be. That is correct.
As long as there's no cars parked out there.
Yeah, that's the issue.
The additional parking's up front, and nobody's, nobody's gonna wanna walk. They never do. Kevin, on Rocky Fork, are there any plans to do any kind of widening of that road or putting any kind of, uh...
I don't think, I don't think we've got any plans right now on any improvements on that part of Rocky Fork.
Especially since we just put Eden Springs in.
Since Eden Springs.
That's beginning the artery now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've got any plans right now to do anything with that.
Have you considered putting the entrance drive between 1 and 2 and 3 and 4 kind of in the center? Do you have a built-in hammerhead?
We basically did come, our original plan did have the, uh, the drive further into the property. We requested my staff to line up with the drive across the street.
Oh, down across the street.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it, 'cause it was, it wasn't really, it was kind of just towards the middle some. It really wasn't in the middle, but it was a little bit closer to the middle. Yeah, yes, sir.
When you were talking about a masonry exterior, I mean, that can be very broad. What are we, what are we talking about?
Uh, brick and rock.
Okay.
Those two items. Uh, and again, we would, uh, you know, be willing to work with staff whenever we come in with building plans specifically that address. Obviously, the elevation plans will be updated at that time.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, the elevations that we received suggest it wasn't 100%. I'm hoping that's not vinyl, and I'm hoping it's cement fiber.
Oh, no, it would be, it would be, it would be hardy-poly.
How do we maintain the, uh, open areas here?
Uh, this would be a horizontal property regime, so it would become an area, and it would be maintained by a third party on the, hired by the homeowners association itself.
Did I see anything as far as a male kiosk?
You do not.
It's under eight, isn't it?
It's, they probably will. I assume they will, since it's more than eight units.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's under eight that you don't have to have. Am I right?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay, so we're okay there. Any other questions for this gentleman? Thank you. Uh, is there someone here from the fire department that would like to speak or could answer a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
Um, as far as a, a hammerhead, uh, or some type of area that would, that you guys need to safely turn, what are we looking at as far as radius, and what are we looking at as far as a, a width to do so?
The, it, it, it's in the appendix of the international fire codes that allows a hammerhead. I don't have the dimensions right in front of me, but it, it's very specific on the length and the width that is required. Um, we did get a auto turn for this property. That's a concern is not having a hammerhead. Also, the auto turn we have today showed it backing up to the east in that little area there, then trying to turn left to get out. It had the apparatus driving into, I'm assuming, is the grass that's right beside the parking spots.
That's a striped, it would be asphalt. That's a striped area there. It shows it driving across the striped area. That's the reason why it's striped, to so, to discourage anybody from parking there. That is great.
We, we would run into the issues, like you were stating earlier, of people parking in the hammerhead. It would have to be marked, no parking signs. Uh, it's, that's all in the fire code that requires that. Uh, but they turn right there, we'd have to make sure, uh, there's no vehicles there. It would be tough to turn in there.
Okay.
As it, as it says today.
Kevin, the front setback on these would, would be 35 feet, correct?
I believe they actually show 40.
Okay.
Um, trying to find what page that was on.
I, I missed that.
Yeah, it's on page C1A. They're showing 40 feet. So, I mean, the driveways, by removing the one set of two units, the driveways actually are, I feel, feel okay about. I mean, I think they're, they're, they're deep enough there, um, with regards to that.
I wanna see it now, a 40-foot, 10-foot side, 25 rear.
Hey, Kevin, back to the kiosk question. It's, it's 10 units.
They may have to have one.
Do they do this by building or by address?
I, I know it's eight lots or more in a subdivision, so I, I think they're probably will end up with a kiosk, would be my guess. And they could probably have, they have a space maybe near that front where they've got the parking.
About the parking area.
To put it, uh, which is where it would make some sense.
We get to have that sort of moving.
Probably on either side of driveway, but most likely on that left side.
I think for me, the big thing is the safety issue, is the, is the, uh, the ability for the fire department to be able to access the property if there ever were a fire or whatever. Safety issue, but...
I agree, Mark. I think I'd rather see the changes that you presented and have the fire department review that and make sure it works for you.
Yeah.
Before, before approving this.
It'd be subject to it anyway, right? Your staff comment, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it might be best, I, I would feel more comfortable, I think, if the fire department had the chance to review it first, you know, um...
So, we can, basically, you're asking for a referral?
It's up to you.
We would be, we'd be okay with that if they didn't make the plan of commission.
We can accept it. We just can't vote on it.
Sure, sure. Yeah, if I need to make a formal request, we'll request that it be deferred one meeting.
Okay.
So that we have an opportunity to look at that.
All right, thank you. And, and I guess what I'm hearing up here is that, uh, we feel like this is a big enough, big enough issue that we would like some further discussion, and we would like to see how this actually works on paper before going forward. Is that...
I know your recommendation, what you're wanting is to approve the PRD and then bring this back as a site plan to see it, but I'm not comfortable with that. I want to see that before we vote on the PRD.
Okay.
We can provide, uh, the revisions with the Auto Turn exhibit that we can present to everybody, uh, on the screen next time, and that, that will, that particular program models all of the wheel movements, both outer and inner of the fire apparatus that the town of Smyrna has. It's not just any fire apparatus. It's the actual truck.
Okay.
That they have, so...
Okay, so, right now, what we've had is a request to defer, and so, before we go there, Chief, did you have anything to say before we take a, a vote?
We were worried. All right, thank you. Um, we were having concerns with the entrance as well, coming off of Rocky Fork. And of course, we're, can, do you want to mention the length of the hammerhead? I would, it'd have to come back.
Yes, sir. The first issue as far as turning in, when they show the, the turn radius of the vehicle, it uses a pretty liberal cut to show it not extending on into the oncoming lane, the exiting lane. And if you, I don't know if that picture's available, Mr. Reevie, that shows their drawing, but as far as trying to leave the, the property when it backs up into that one section there to the right, the radius is long enough that all four wheels go into the striped area. And in 11-foot, if we're going to address at the far end a single-lane turnaround, I think it would be obvious to you with the amount of space that's necessary just in that entranceway for the vehicle to make it out. An 11-foot-wide single-lane hammerhead would in no way accommodate the apparatus that could potentially be in that property.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, and I think you've, you've heard the concerns, and this is something that you can hopefully address, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I've, I've had a request to defer. We need a motion to act on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion to defer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
They made the motion, I'm sorry.
Mark.
Okay, thank you.
I heard that. All in favor of, uh, deferring signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to defer. Um, next, uh, it looks like we've, we've got a series of plats we're gonna be looking at. We'll start with preliminary plats, Blakeney subdivision, section three, 8575 Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. Owner, developer, Blakeney Partners, GP.
Yeah, this is section three of the, of the Blakeney, uh, PRD, uh, subdivision within the PRD. It's, uh, 85 single-family lots, 17 townhome lots on 33 and a half acres. Um, we had several comments. Some, uh, the first four comments are really standard-type comments that would, would need to remain. Uh, comment number five, we'd asked for them to submit the road names and the 911 approval for those road names. Uh, we have, they have, do have the names shown. I think we still need some 911 approval on, I think, three of them still. Uh, so we need to, we can modify comment five and keep it. Um, we asked them to label the public utility and drainage movements. Uh, we've still got two or three that we see that they need to, to label those, so we need to keep comment six. Uh, comment seven regarding a sewer line, the needsments, that's been addressed, can be removed. And then, there was a solid line running behind lots 139 to 148. That's one of the sewer lines that needed a label, um, so that has been addressed as well. So, those can be removed. Um, we asked about the male kiosk on this section of phase, and they are still working through that with the post office, and so we would need to keep that, 'cause that, that still needs to be shown. Um, comment number 10 regarding pavement, pavement width has been addressed and can, can be removed. Um, and then, the rest of the comments were from CUD, other than comment 11 regarding the minimum fire flow that is required to be met before they can get building permits. Um, and so, then, then the rest of those were from CUD regarding the water plans for this development. So, we would need to keep those, 'cause they are CUD's comments, and they, they may have been addressed, but they, they would need to review those. So, um, so, uh, the only other thing I would have, um, the driveway dedication on Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, as it is a collector, would need to be shown. I don't believe that's shown on this drawing. That is something that was not in the original comments that we would need to add. Um, so, uh, but with those comments, we would recommend approval.
Consistent with what we've seen before?
Yes, it is consistent with the approved PRD, um, all the setbacks, everything is all consistent in open space, all that.
Okay. Questions for staff? Do I have a motion? Motion to approve staff comments.
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve the staff comments, do I have a second? Motion and a second to approve the staff comments, further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our next preliminary plat is Stewart's Glen, eighty-one sixty-two and eighty-two eighty-six, Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, owner, developer, Real Estate Solutions Group, LLC.
This is a preliminary plat for Stewart's Glen Developments, twenty single-family lots, thirty-two townhomes on fourteen point two acres. Again, we had some, first three comments were standard comments that would need to remain. Comments number four regarding a completed application has been submitted, can be removed. Comment five regarding the utility and drainage easements can be removed, it's been addressed. With number six, we asked them to confirm the spelling of one of the streets because it differed with the nine-one-one approval, so that's been taken care of. So four, five, and six can all be removed. Number seven, again, the required minimum fire flow must be met prior to issuance of building permits, that's an informational comment, but there's several of these in this area and we just wanted to keep that one for everyone's knowledge and use. Comment number eight has been addressed regarding the parking space dimensions being labeled, so we can remove that one. We did receive the fire truck turnaround analysis on this one, they did not provide the details on what type of truck they used, so that one we need, we have addressed it, but we still need to keep that comment so they can revise that, so the fire department has the correct information to reevaluate that. And then number ten, we asked them to provide the landscaping details, there's a landscape area within the cul-de-sac, and they did basically, they're showing, basically it's just going to be primarily just be grass and not any actual landscaping, but they do need to label that as such. And then the rest of the comments are, again, CUD comments, eleven through fourteen, so we would need to keep those. So basically, we need to keep one and three, seven, nine and ten reworded, and then eleven through fourteen. And with those comments, we would recommend approval.
Do we have any idea as far as CUD's timetable, as far as their improvements?
They, this was in, the improvements that were slated to be completed, they told us spring of 2021. They have added some additional issues, I think, and they've asked for this Lower Ridge, what they're called, the Lower Ridge Pump Station. And so, I think they're still working through with that as far as, I don't know the timetable on that part of it, so. I haven't had any update in a while from CUD on that timing.
So until that's done, then a building permit would not be issued, correct?
Correct. They could go ahead and start work, put the infrastructure in place so that they're ready when the improvements are done, but they could not get any building permits.
Okay. And it's been that way?
For some time now.
For some time now, and with several subdivisions and everybody out there is aware of that.
They're starting to get closer to getting permits on some of them and.
But from a staff perspective, we're go ahead, we're good to go ahead and look at what's presented and approve, and it's still subject to.
Certainly.
Okay.
How long does that approval last?
The preliminary plat approval is good for a year, they would have to submit construction plans and final plat within a year. And the final plat certainly would come back to you all. And then once that final plat's approved, then they have, as long as they begin work, then they're good to go. There's no expiration on that approval.
Any additional questions or comments?
I will be voting, Chair.
Mark will not be participating in voting. Hearing none, further questions or comments, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
A motion and a second to approve the staff comments, further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our last preliminary plat is Walnut Ridge, extension of Q Garden Lane, owner, developer, J.M. Burns, LLC.
Yeah, this is one that you all have seen before, actually, the approval has expired, and so it's been over a year. And so now they are ready to get going on it, and so they have resubmitted. It has tweaked it a little bit, it's a little bit smaller than what they had looked at before as far as it's the size of the section. This is just phase one, it's eleven lots on five point four-four acres, zone R3, would be an extension of an existing street called Q Garden Lane. We had three comments, they're all would remain, they're all very standard comments, they really have addressed everything we have needed. This one is a little bit different, if you, some of you may or may not remember, but before, there was going to be an extension of a water line from Rock Springs Road. This will actually be coming from, through the Gwyn Farms Development, is where the water line would come in to provide the fire flow in this area, so. And, but that's what I have.
Staff recommend approval?
Yes, sir.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Kevin, we're next on to final plats?
That's correct.
All right. Blakeney subdivision, section one, phase, or, excuse me, section two, phase one, eighty-one eighty-eight Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, owner, developer, Blakeney Partners, GP.
Yeah, this is the Blakeney section two, there's three of these, phase one, two, and three, this is phase one, this is thirty-one lots, four point four acres. We had a few comments. Number one regarding, ask them to show and label all utility and drainage easements, and they have done that one, so it can be addressed. We asked them about this one and the mail kiosk, this, all of phase, or section two, rather, will be served, there's an existing mail kiosk with phase one that's large enough to serve phase two, and so, or, I'm sorry, section one that serves section two, and so that will be, can be, has been addressed because it will be in, as part of phase, section one, so. There was a certificate of approval from CUD that was regarding sprinkler systems, and so we asked them to remove that, as fire flow must be provided in this section, and so they did remove that, so that can be taken off. Comment number four is a standard comment regarding signatures prior to submitting to the town, and then again, comments five through eleven are all CUD comments, and so we would leave those for CUD to review. So with those comments, staff would recommend approval.
And again, consistent with what we saw from the preliminary plat?
Consistent with the PRD and the preliminary plat, yes, sir.
Okay.
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next agenda item is Blakeney subdivision, section two, phase two, eighty-one eighty-eight Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, owner, developer, Blakeney Partners, GP.
Yeah, this phase is forty-eight lots on six acres, again, had some similar comments, and again, the one, comment number one regarding the easements being labeled has been addressed. Comment number two regarding the CUD certification has been removed, so that can be taken off. There were some road widths that still needed to be labeled, and that's been taken care of on this section, so three can be removed. And again, the mail kiosk issue is addressed, this can be in section one, so ones through four can all be taken off, and then five through thirteen, what else need to remain, and with that, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin or staff? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further discussion or any questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three hundred, final plats, Blakeney subdivision, section two, phase three, eighty-one eighty-eight Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, owner, developer, Blakeney Partners, GP.
Yeah, this is phase three of section two, sixteen lots on three point seven-five acres. Again, some similar comments regarding the one and two that we had seen before on the other phases have both been addressed and can be removed. And then comments, the rest of the comments are from CUD and/or us, standard comments and would need to remain, and with those, staff would recommend approval.
Didn't we just talk about this one?
Yes, we did.
Yeah. Questions or comments?
Move for approval with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Tony, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is Cedar Hills, section three, Shady Dell Trail, it's kind of hard to say, Miltry Court, Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, owner, developer, Cedar Hills Holding, LP.
Yeah, this is phase three of Cedar Hills, it is ninety-two lots on forty-three point seven acres, as part of the Cedar Hills PRD. We had a few comments with regards to comment one, they have addressed it, other than there is one of the easements on lot one-seventy-three, we still need to provide some dimensions on that. Number two has been addressed with, except for one little, one of the stub streets, still needs to have the road width labeled, so we need to keep that one amended. Comment number three regarding the roadway dedication on Rocky Fork Road, that has been addressed and can be removed. And then comments four through nine are standard or CUD comments, and so those would need to remain, and with that, those comments, staff would recommend approval.
All right, Kevin, thank you. Any questions for Kevin?
I forget who Shady Dell was.
I've heard of Slim Shady, but I'm sure. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Thank you, Andrew, I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second? Tony, was it you that said second?
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Ravens Point, section one, West Sam Ridley Parkway, owner, developer, R&amp;J Family Limited Trust.
This is section one of the Ravens Point Development, which is on Sam Ridley, in the C2 zones, ten lots, twenty-two point zero-five acres. Comment number one is a standard comment regarding owner's signature. And comment number two, we'd asked them, some of the detention ponds and public utility and drainage easements need to be labeled, and so they have done that one, so it can be addressed, so it's really just the one standard comment is all that we have. It is, again, is consistent with the approved preliminary plat for this section.
And you're recommending approval?
Yes, we would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further questions or discussion? Hearing done, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item, agenda, is Seven Oaks Business Center, lots seven, eight, and nine, Seven Oaks Boulevard, owner, Bob Harps.
Yeah, this is a final plat for three lots on three point six-five, five acres on Seven Oaks Boulevard, these do also, one of the lots does have frontage on Ambleville Road as well. The, we just have one comment regarding adding the owner's signatures, this is, that would be all that we would have. Again, it is consistent with all the other development in that area with regards to those commercial lots that are starting to develop there along Seven Oaks Boulevard now, so. But that's, that would be all that I have, and we recommend approval.
And it's zone C2, it's been C2, and they're.
Been C2 for twenty-plus years, yes.
Okay. Any additional questions or further discussion? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further questions or additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So our last item under final plats is Shorts Crossing, phase one, seven-seven-seven-three West Jefferson Pike, owner, developer, James Shorts.
Yeah, this is, this is the one we looked at on a sketch plat last month, and this would basically take the existing lots along Jefferson Pike, there's two houses there, and then they're wanting to build a third. Just, it would only, the one house, that property line is actually not changing, it would just be the other two. And so, they're wanting to go ahead and get the approval. It's, it is in an R1 zone, it's just those two lots. We had a few comments, which are kind of a carryovers from our plat, or discussion regarding the sketch plat, regarding the minimum fire flow, these are proposed to be larger homes, which does kick in a higher fire flow requirement of seventeen hundred fifty gallons a minute at twenty PSI. And so, because of the existing fire flow that is along Jefferson Pike here, it's going to change with the widening of the road, but as it currently stands, it's only six hundred gallons a minute. So they are going to have to sprinkle, if they build it before those improvements are made, they will have to sprinkle the building, and they will have to build a house that is completely under roof at less than the thirty-six hundred square feet. And so that's, again, those were carryovers from our previous discussion with the sketch plat, they have added notes to that effect on the plat, so that's, has been taken care of with regards to the plat, but we did want to still keep as comments. Comment number four, they did add those two certifications, so we can remove that comment. They did show the line size for that existing water line that would be serving this new house that you're proposing, so that's been taken care of. The lot numbering they had was inconsistent with the sketch plats, they've taken care of that one. We did ask them to show the soils area, because there is no sewer again, not there yet, because there's the improvements haven't been made along Jefferson Pike yet, and so they are showing that soils there for. In the comment lot one oh two, it's actually comment twenty-eight, or lot twenty-eight, and the existing comment, or the existing septic system on what they had is lot one oh one, which is twenty-seven. And so they have shown that existing system as well as the proposed location of the system on one oh two. And then comment number eight, our subdivision regulations do require any subdivision that's not on public sewer system is required to be reviewed by the council in addition to the planning commission, so this would, if you all do approve it, would also have to go to council as well, because it is utilizing septic system, so that's really kind of for their information more than anything. So, again, we would want to keep comments one, two and three, just because of, they're aware of it, there's notes around the plat, but we would want to recommend approval with those three comments as a part of the approval.
And it sounds like that's subject to when they develop and what's in place as far as sewer.
Correct.
And or as the water is improved, then those may actually not be required.
May not be required if they wait until that's in place, but if they do want to, my understanding is they do want to go ahead and build this one house now and so that would, would be in place.
Okay. Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further discussion?
They show me is not voting, I assisted the Short family.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, most carries. Did we just work our way through plats?
We went through the plats.
Wow. Mitchell, I guess that's your time then. So, under site plans, we have lot three, Aeroplex Park Edition, six oh three Swan Drive, owner Tony Liebrich.
This is a proposed expansion on an existing building at lot three Aeroplex Park, which has an address of six oh three, six oh five and six oh seven Swan Drive. This expansion would be a nine thousand square foot warehouse. In February of two thousand twelve, the border zoning appeals did grant a twenty-foot side setback variance for this property, allowing for the structure to be ten foot off of the eastern property line. Current building is being used for manufacturing, office and storage totaling approximately fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven square feet. The new additional warehouse of nine thousand square feet would add approximately fifty-six percent additional overall space of coverage structure to this property. The vehicular use area at this property, twenty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet, which would require two thousand three hundred and thirty-three square feet of landscaping. Alpkin is showing two thousand four hundred and seventy-three square feet, so they're meeting that requirement. Total parking required of eighteen spaces, they're proposing for twenty-six, which includes the existing parking at the site. And that would require two handicap spaces and they are showing for two as well. Landscape plan which was submitted shows a total of twelve sugar maple trees which will be planted along that eastern property line. Designer view, the architectural elevations which were submitted show building with metal on all sides. The front of the existing structure along Swan Drive is brick with the rest of the building utilizing a metal material. Elevations will need to meet designer view since it is an addition which is over fifty percent of the existing square footage. Concrete tilt panel may be used in industrial districts as well as in metal. Per designer view, the metal may not be used if visible from an arterial street, in this instance, Weekly Lane is an arterial street. When viewing the property from Weekly Lane, from what we gauged based on just a Google street view, we did see that had the potential to be visible from Weekly, in which case metal may not be used on this portion of the building. Couple standard comments and then we had two staff comments to go with these. Staff comment one regarding the fire hydrant transformer pad and existing utilities to be relocated on the property, they were shown to be within a vehicular moving pattern on the site. The Alpkin did resubmit plans addressing this, the fire hydrant was relocated nearby an existing fence line, utilities department is okay with this change. And I was able to reach out with Mill Tennessee Electric regarding the transformer pad and existing utilities. The revisions to this plan show a curb and bollards surrounding the existing utilities out there. Mill Tennessee Electric is okay with this change, they just want to make sure the bollards are in a good location as to not interfere with any of the transformer poles and they don't want the concrete within five feet of the poles or transformer pad in any direction for maintenance purposes. So for all things considered, staff comment one can be removed. Staff comment two, we asked them to show materials to be used on elevations, they do, did address this comment, portion of the comment and have metal as shown as the primary material. Going back to what I mentioned earlier about the Weekly Lane being visible from Weekly, this will need to be designer view, so if the building is visible from Weekly, at least this portion of it will need to be revised to some other material that is not metal. So with that, staff would recommend approval with those comments.
Questions for Mitchell or staff?
I'm trying to remember what faces Weekly Lane now.
It's the building.
Well, I mean, I know where, I'm just trying to remember the design of it, I go by there a lot, I don't know if I.
Currently you have a brick building that fronts and this is behind it.
So, because this has a partial visibility similar to those having frontal visibility.
Yeah, so this extension would go beyond.
One side?
Yes, it's just not on one side.
The side with the, which is where the roll up doors and all that are going to be proposed. And they did, they did show brick on, a portion of this addition will be visible from Swan Drive, which is where there is brick on the existing front, and they did show brick on that portion of it, so they did try to match as far as the visibility from Swan Drive. But then the rest of the building would be kind of a, I think there is some concrete block or whatever around the base, but basically a metal structure, so.
So I just want to make sure, what, with what we have in place now, what is the current?
The existing building?
Yeah.
It has, it's kind of brick on the front, but then metal on the sides of the rear and they're wanting to add on to the back, basically. But the existing building is really not visible from Weekly Lane with this addition. If you're coming down Weekly Lane, southbound of Weekly Lane, you probably will be able to see the back part of it. And of course, that building, the existing building was built well before designer view was adopted, this is, but with, in existing buildings like this, if you build more than fifty percent of the existing square footage, designer view kicks in, so.
Think of the building down there by, what's the electric, electric company, they did one in the industrial park right there, they had to break the whole side facing Weekly.
Oh, Snyder Electric.
By Snyder, yeah.
Yeah. Of course, that actually fronted on Weekly Lane, this one doesn't front Weekly Lane, but it has visibility from Weekly Lane, right.
Additional questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll move for approval with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, second to approve with staff comments, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, most carries. Uh, our next item is a mandatory referral, Spring Hill Extension Easement.
Yeah, this is a, a mandatory referral, this is from the utilities department, this is a part of the, the town courses in the process of, of considering an extension of Spring Hill Drive south from its current ending point to, towards the school system, schools. And so as outside of that though, the, the utilities department does need easements for water sanitary sewer and natural gas main. And so as a part of that, they do need some, some three new permanent easements in that area. And so they have, that's, they've requested this, the approval from planning, or recommendation from planning commission to council to move forward with obtaining those easements, and so that's, we would recommend this to you.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, most carries. March Bonrue reports.
Yeah, we have a few this month, the first one is Bankside Three, since the packet went out, they have, everything has been completed there and we can, this is the end of the maintenance period, and so our recommendation would, would be basically to release that one, because per the public work inspector, everything is completed now, so we can release Bankside Three. Burton Farms, section five, phase, there's a phase three and a phase four, both, again, are kind of at that end of the maintenance period. Did talk to the developers, since, since the packets went out, did talk to him, he did indicate to me that, that they had met with our inspectors this week and they would be getting everything finished and would request it to be released and we are fine if they get everything done before March nineteenth, do release it, otherwise we would need to extend it. But if they get everything done, we can release those. And then addition to Village Valley Green, there was one item remaining on that and talked to the developer, he'd asked again to be released, this, it is the end of the maintenance period, if everything gets, that one item gets done, we certainly can release that one, otherwise we would need to, need to extend it. And then Strolling of Stonecrest, this is just final items, they got finished and that has, everything is done there, and so we can release that one as well, so hopefully we can end up releasing all of these, but that's probably be our goal, so. And that's our report.
Somebody could have been listening from last month, I'm not sure. Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff recommendations.
I have a motion to approve the Bonrue report with staff recommendations, do I have a second?
All second.
Multiple seconds. I have a motion and several seconds to approve this, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the Bonrue report is approved. Staff comments and or other business?
The fire department, you all had asked last month about some, to get kind of an overview on sprinklers and when sprinklers are required, and so they are here and are, and are prepared to, to provide you some information.
Just to give you a brief overview, when they're required, it's, everything is based off the international fire code of the twenty eighteen and the building code also. Basically, what we do is we go into the book and it's broken down into multiple sections where we have to take the occupancy, the occupancy load and the type of construction that's being built at the time, we take every one of those variables and the book actually breaks everything down per the occupancy. There is not a one set size of a building or anything to, when we're going to decide if they need a sprinkler system or not. Kind of give you an example, if you had a airport hangar that's five thousand square feet, it might not need a sprinkler system if it's only going to be housing a hangar, but if you do any maintenance in there and of a hangar that's thirty thousand square feet, you're doing any type of hangar, uh, safety work in there or it has an office it would require. You can actually go down to a thousand square feet on certain properties that might require a sprinkler system, but there is not a, really a set standard. Everything is grouped by, you know, a group A for your assemblies, your group E for your educational, group F for industries and group I for institutionals and then of course your market tile and your storage. That brings up a lot of variables of the size, the amount of people are going to be in there, where you're going to allow occupancy load to be. Then on certain instances like your warehouses or stores buildings, if they're going to have available water, just like we were running into the houses being built on Jefferson Pike, if it didn't have the proper water volume, you might have to require a sprinkler system to get it a reduction. But there is not a basic amount of square footage or a type of property that would require sprinkler system, it's all variables off of, when you take the information in the occupancy load, the type of occupancy, what the building material is, are they, what they're going to store there, how many people and everything like that.
How is the occupancy load determined?
It depends on the occupancy or it, basically we ask the builder or what they're going to use, be the use of, what they're going to store inside there, if they tell me they're only going to have under a hundred people, then it might not require, but once you hit the threshold of a hundred, you would require sprinkler system, what the use of, even like in schools, most people think schools have to have sprinkler system, but once you keep the threshold down and have the double X that you might not require a sprinkler system for a small school versus like our, one of our county schools. There's so many different exceptions they have in their rule, there's some that automatically make you have to do, then they give you exceptions, you can build firewalls to not have to do a sprinkler system, that's where the building codes come in play, because they have the exceptions in there that are not actually in the building code, I mean, the fire code also, so we have to work together.
Yeah, I think one of the, a couple of the items that we run into and, and we try to reconcile, for instance, the self-storage.
Yes, sir.
Particularly the ones that are not climate controlled.
Yes, sir.
You know, my background's as an insurance agent and one of the worst claims you can get is when you have a sprinkler system or any water pipe for that, in that case freeze and then thaw, and you've got a huge disaster on your hand as far as what's on the inside of that. So when we're looking at buildings such as self-storage and, and I want to talk about airport hangars too, because you, you brought that up, how does the, how does the code address that and is, is there any consideration as far as whether the pipes or the space itself has to be climate controlled or is there a different type of sprinkler system that's used as opposed to one that, that utilizes water? You can kind of talk to that.
Yes, sir, there, there's multiple different types of systems and in that incident there would you have, it's called the dry system, it'd have air pressure in it on one side, water on the other side, until that head activated, it, it would just dump out the air and allow the water flow, it has a valve in there. These systems are designed by certified sprinkler companies and they have to send a copy of the designs to the state and have to be approved. They factor in the weather, also the systems are designed to have a heating system connected to them inside the pump room to keep a source of heat going through the system. They also make a type of antifreeze that you can also put into the system in certain types of buildings. Also, you have dilute systems that are, work off a sensor, there's, there's open heads, they don't have anything at all, they just dump the water automatically.
So, when you're, again, when you're looking at the storage, is it based upon a square footage per building, whether or not it, it triggers the code that would require a sprinkler or is there a different type of trigger for that?
It's the overall square footage for the whole entire building and also the storage. Now, if you get into storage buildings, you get into, are they storing airplanes or they storing cars and, and you have to have an idea of what they're going to allow to be stored inside that building. Mattresses, if you're storing there, that automatically triggers that they have to have a sprinkler system. Cars, once it gets to, it's a very minimal square footage, it makes you have, if you have cars and airplanes in there, it's all dictated on what's inside there.
So do we as a, as a town, do, when, when we're looking at someone who's bringing a storage facility, do we specifically ask them what items do you anticipate that would be stored there or?
We ask them what the use is going to be, it, with a general storage building, you have to just take it, it's going to be some home goods and stuff like that. And that, that counts, the one that was presented last, I think, meeting, that was based off the water flow, it was to give them an idea that there's a possibility you won't have enough water flow. flow, then gives them the option either make the building smaller, or you might have to put a sprinkler system in to reduce the amount of fire flow needed. That's why that recommendation was put in there.
And so the, the type of sprinkler system then would be set up in such a way that it would be either heated, or it would be a different type of system where that owner wouldn't be, and the people who have spaces there wouldn't be as concerned about an issue with water?
Yes, sir. It's up to the, the building owner and the design company to come together and decide on what will be adequate for that building.
Okay. And the same thing, you mentioned the airport hangars, which I think we're going to be dealing with quite a bit more.
Yes, sir.
So could you, again, go over the triggers as far as what would require a hangar to? I heard maintenance is, as a potential trigger that would require it, but could you go over that again?
Airport hangars, if they're going to do any, if it's just storage, it just goes basically off the square footage, but if they're going to be doing any maintenance inside there, they have to follow NFPA 409, which automatically requires them to have certain things, a sprinkler system, a foam system, they have to have a retention pond for that foam if it activates, they have to also have a minimal amount of water left on the hydrant once that whole entire system activates.
So, once again, not necessarily what we would think of traditionally as just a wet system where, where water comes down, there's probably a different medium that, that would fight something that was related to aviation fuel or something along those lines.
Yes, sir. It had to have like a triple foam. The system will be designed around what's going to be in there. You could actually have two systems there, one in the bay area where they're storing the planes, you could have a foam system inside the building, you might have just a regular sprinkler system.
Okay.
But those requirements all will be based off the NFPA standard.
Okay.
With all the different variations, do you think there's a proposed turnaround time for determination with someone looking to build and needing to implement a sprinkler system?
We try to do our best to get it as soon as possible to them, we know they want to build. Me and myself and Captain Byers, we sit through and research the book together and go through every part of it and try to find every exception to the benefits of the builder, and then also protects the property and the personnel at the, at the business.
Yeah, sounds like a lot.
It is. It is time to submit, but we work well together, we'll be able to get all that information.
If it helps you at all, some of the variables he's talking about, to give you an idea of what you'd be looking at, the code breaks it down into four separate categories of a hangar, and specifically, they have a specific change point of 1,600 gallons of fuel is a point where it becomes necessary to have some type of suppression system, and whether or not any additional work other than just simply storing the airplane. But, you know, to give you a quick answer, if you've got a single airplane hangar without work being done, it's most likely not going to require any sprinkler. If you're going to have repair work being done, several aircraft, especially another point is 7,500 gallons, it definitely requires the system. So those are some blocks that we look for specifically that we can give you a pretty quick answer as to whether or not it's most likely going to have to have a sprinkler or not.
And then there are maybe variations after that with the type of sprinklers that are available, correct?
Well, yes, sir, that falls into 409, and also just simply whether or not the, the person who is contracted to install it, they'll make a recommendation whether or not they need a dry system, looking at the weather that's normally within the area, as Mr. Morrell was, you know, talking about, if we had a normal weather that was involving freezing temperatures on a yearly basis, they may very well, you know, want to put in a dry system so that there is no chance for a rupture of a line in those weather conditions.
You hear the questions?
No.
It's not a question, I just, I was kind of blown away when you said schools don't require, because they have exit doors, so.
It depends on the size and the amount of students, because there is a lot of private schools that only have one classroom, where a lot of people automatically hear schools have to have them. No, they actually, there's exceptions, you keep the students under this amount, and you have a front exit and a back exit in the classroom. You have two ways out, there's, there's a lot of exceptions in the rules.
So I'm just being hypothetical, because I'm just asking a dumb question, I don't understand what would keep somebody from just putting a couple of exit doors in their hangar?
But the, but a hangar is told, with that, because it's from a type S versus A.
There's nobody occupying a hangar where there's a school full of children, that's why I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, they look at the fire load, sir, just the potential for the fire being 1,600 gallons of aircraft fuel versus some school books.
I get that, I'm just saying, is there a way to?
Yeah, a lot of people will actually make their building a little smaller so they don't have to do the sprinkler system, and they'll go one foot under just to get out from it.
There's a lot of combustion in a hangar, right.
Well, yes, sir, and to confuse it more, if you have a 28-foot door, it's a step higher in fire suppression requirements, so the door actually requires more suppression.
So the summary of all that is, it's not just a straightforward answer.
There is not a straightforward answer at all.
Chief, do you do these formulas in your sleep? I mean, do you do this at night?
No. No, but I think about several buildings here at night. And not only do they look at the load, they'll change it on us. So that's why you see us doing life safety inspection at all the commercial, industrial, educational, because they'll say to Assistant Chief, they're keeping water here, and then we do our life space, life safety inspections, we walk into the building, and we find it's coal oil, or it's something else, they've changed their storage, so then we have to look at addressing that part. So they, they could go 11 months and, and change it on us, so, but we'll eventually get around visiting.
I know I'm.
As far as the heads, you know, there's only one at a time goes off, when one head hits, they don't all go off. For the self-storage.
That's just in the movies.
That's in the movies. That's right, sir. But they might need to all go off, but.
Depending on how hot it is, because the heat's what kicks them off anyway.
The heads are by heat, and that's how they work.
Well, we get to see you a lot, chief, we don't get to see these other gentlemen quite as often.
Well, you, that's going to change, I hope, sir.
Yeah, but just want to say, just want to say thank you to you guys.
Mr. Riggs be allowed his in, Mr. Spearman and Mr. Hurkley, they tell me not to talk, but I'll have to dress up when I get out in the hallway.
Chief, are you violating any fire codes by speaking?
As we speak?
Yes.
A lot of hot air out there.
Yes, mask is scheduled.
Thank you for coming and speaking to us, we look forward to having you in the future, but more importantly, thank you for a service to our town. It's, without you guys, it's, it's not that safe place to believe, to live, and we, we thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for having us.
Okay.
Sorry.
Kevin, any other business?
I don't have any else.
I see that they're motioning for chief outside in the hallway, so we'll let him go first. Anything from the commission? We stand adjourned.